To the Infrastructure Services Committee meeting. Can everyone hear me around the room? Ian and Cath, you can hear me over there on the... Okay, thank you. Welcome to staff and members of the public and also the media. And we have apologies from Mia Kow, Councillor McTavish, Councillor Bezette, who are all on council business, and Councillor Stain. So I'll move that those apologies be accepted, seconded by Councillor Van de Wiss. Any discussion? If not, I'll put the motion or those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried confirmation of the agenda. I just need to comment that yesterday we received the implementation plan, or the potential actions for the Waste Management and Minimisation Plan. And I suppose the point is that this info is obviously the stage that needs to be considered through the annual plan process. So unfortunately, that wasn't included when the other papers were circulated. So it's really just an additional appendix to the Waste Management and Minimisation Plan. So I hope everyone did receive a copy. I think you should have got one yesterday. But no comments? Okay, no good as gold. So we'll confirm the agenda with that additional information for item four. Move myself, seconded by Councillor Van de Wiss. Any discussion? If not, I'll put the motion or those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried. Moving on to item four. The Statement of Proposal for the Draft Waste Management and Minimisation Plan. Welcome to Ian and Cath. Now, we're all aware that you both have been on quite a journey. And Cath in particular, for the rest of the committee's information. Councillors Butcher, McTavish and the mayor have been involved in the... and myself involved in the Working Party, working with staff, and also the external consultant from MWH, John Cox. But Cath in particular has very much driven this process. And I know Gindi has had a considerable involvement as well. But it's quite a milestone to actually have it in front of the committee. So thanks very much, team, and in particular to you, Cath. Well done. Ian and Cath, do you want to make any comment? Or the GM as an introductory comment?
I've just got a couple of words to say. This really is 18 months' worth of work that Cath and I, or certainly Cath has embarked on. We opted to use our own internal resources to develop this plan. We started, obviously, with a waste assessment that we adopted about this time last year. And then have further developed the Waste Minimisation Plan, ready for consultation as you see it now. Just a few of the points there. Really, the plan's written in two parts, pretty well prescribed by the Waste Minimisation Act 2008. So it does differ slightly from conventional plans. And really, I think we've had some workshops to review things in the past. So we're more than happy to take your questions.
Thanks, Ian. Cath, do you want to add any comments?
No, it's just been a wonderful experience. So I look forward to taking it forward, yeah.
And it's probably with the committee noting that because the changes of legislation in the Waste Act has, A, meant we had to review our existing resource recovery Waste Management Plan. And the assessment, as Ian's alluded to, that was an obligation that we had. So as part of this process, we haven't actually went and looked for work. It was something that desperately needed to be done to meet the requirements of the Act.
It was. And I guess one of the most significant changes, too, is that the Waste Act makes us sort of responsible for an overview of the whole district or jurisdiction of Dunedin Waste Services, interverte material facilities and the like. So it goes past the point of what council provides, it's broader than that.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. As a member of the Working Party, I think if you go to page five and just look at the vision, where we've carried on the theme of Dunedin being a zero-waste city. And if you look at the goals, one, two and three, it's very much building a relationship with the community and partnerships with community groups, businesses, job creation. And obviously valuing waste and clearly taking a responsibility, as we have done in the past, in terms of minimising harmful effects of waste, being goal three. So I think that pretty much sets out what it's all about.
In this section, it's largely also to do with what we have some direct control over as a council. So in this section of governance leadership and engagement, it's a lot about us. And then in the other sections, we have one specifically around community. So it's much more at a level of engagement with community and inviting community participation and their initiatives. And in the third section, it's about that engagement we have with businesses, with waste providers, with industry and businesses. So it's your cleaner production, your resource recovery sector, that type of engagement, yeah.
Thank you. Bliss, was there anything you wanted to comment on? Okay, questions? Lee.
Perhaps a little unfair since Gindi isn't here. But if you look at the last page of the action plan, 8.1.2.2, we've got investigate DCC, provide support, I think there's a word missing there, and funded facilitation for educational hands-on composting workshops within communities. This is a Gindi-ism if ever I've read one. Where is this funding for funded facilitation to come from? And what is the amount of funded facilitation for the hands-on composting workshops?
What brought him, Mr Chair? I found that a really derogatory statement towards councillor McTavish.
Is this a point of order?
And I would like that councillor to apologise.
I want to hear the point of order.
Is it a point of order?
Hang on, I'll make that judgement, Bliss.
I found that comment very derogatory towards councillor McTavish. And I would like councillor Van de Wiss to apologise to her. She's put a lot of effort into this.
Councillor Van de Wiss, what I would like you to do in terms of when you refer to councillor McTavish, she is very passionate about this particular topic, along with numerous other topics that council deal with. Could you just refer to her as being an enthusiastic member about this particular item?
Yes, and that's actually what I meant when I said it's obviously a Gindi-ism. When councillor Butcher interrupted just now, did she ask for a point of order or did she not?
She did.
I didn't hear that. Was the point of order allowed?
I've ruled upon it and I've suggested that you be a little... you modify your language when you refer to councillor McTavish.
What was the point of order and what was your decision on it, Bliss?
Would you like me to repeat it?
Hang on, Councillor. The point of order is that I felt that your comments are inappropriate.
But that's not a point of order.
Well, I have just ruled on it and I've said that.
That's derogatory.
I've suggested that they are inappropriate.
Towards another councillor.
And I've suggested that you just modify your language when you refer to councillor McTavish. That's simple.
I've asked the question, I'm looking forward to an answer.
So composting workshops, we run already. Many of the things in the action list are existing activities. They're funded through the Waste Levy Fund. So what it is, it is a hands-on education initiative. So we have a facilitator who's very experienced in different ways of composting. And she actually goes in these communities to do these workshops and they're booked out. So we do about four a year? Three a year, yeah. And they're very popular.
Sorry, the question was, what is the quantum of this funding? And what budget does it come out of?
It comes out of the Waste Levy Budget.
Yeah, it's out of our Waste Strategy Budget and it's about $1,200 a year.
Okay, thanks.
General Manager.
I was really just to note that the appendix two, which has been circulated separately, is for consideration in the 1415 Annual Plan Round. And I'm not sure, Mr Chair, whether that's been fully explained about the relationship between the appendix two, which will need to be consulted on in terms of the funding implications as part of the 1415 year, and the rest of the plan. Because there's a subtlety there, I think.
So the question is, I suppose, Ian and Cath, are we going to supply the action plan with the Waste Minimisation or Waste Management Minimisation Plan when we consult? Is that going to be additional information that the community will have to comment when they comment on the plan? Or is it going to be solely diverted to annual plan, which you might argue could be a little bit... it could disadvantage submitters where they perhaps are looking for what's actually going to happen? What are the actions that's probably more meaningful to them or to a lot of people, rather than the more high-level stuff in the actual document?
Yeah, I take your point. It's a bit of a grey area in the fact that the... under the Waste Act, the only points that we were needing to consult on were the objectives, the policies and the methods. The actual action plans weren't requiring public consultation through the Act. However, we have included it for more for completeness or information to give people an idea of what sorts of thoughts we had thought about as far as how we were going to achieve these methods. And I think we intended to include it more as information that we would confirm in the 1415 Annual Plan.
So if submitters chose to make comment on the implementation plan, there's no reason why the hearings panel could divert that to be considered by council for the 1415, correct?
Correct, correct. We were going to put a section on the submission form that had reference to that part of it.
Thank you. Kate, then Lee.
And I'm trying to think of how this normally works. But it's not a criticism and I don't want it to be taken as a criticism. I just want to make sure that we've covered the ground and hence asking the question. The steering group are somewhat passionately involved in having created this document and been very hands-on. I appreciate the work that they've all done. But I'm just wondering if that then is a bias for the hearing's panel? Because have they so passionately put themselves in? I'm sure that I'm comfortable with the members that they will see past it and welcome the comments made to them at the hearings process. But I probably just want to cover that off and just check that process-wise that it's not seen as... we've heard how much passion has gone into it. Just to cover that off. And I'd probably question for you, Mr Chairman, and I'm sure you're quite happy to cover it.
I can't speak for the other members. I'm sure councillor Butcher can speak for herself. But when we talked about that aspect, my initial reaction was continuity. And that was the reason why I suggested the same panel. But certainly have an open mind if the committee feel that it should be a different make-up or a mix, more than happy for that to happen. But my own personal view was really just the continuity I felt was an advantage.
Oh, and I take that on board. I suppose that the fact that we've heard about all this passion that's been given to it, you're quite confident that people will go with an open mind with it and into that process? And that was really the question, yeah.
I suppose, wearing a council hat, doing all sorts of things, we all have that responsibility, haven't we, on behalf of the community to have an open mind? Lee, then Sid.
I was just wanting to clear up the wording while we were on 8.1.2.2. Investigate DCC provides doesn't actually make sense. Do you want to investigate more funding? Or is it this initial funding that we're already doing that you're talking about from the Waste Levy Fund? What does it actually mean?
So the way... what we're looking at here is how we can use the Waste Levy Fund to incentivise waste minimisation during community clean-up days. So that could be a beach clean-up, that could be a clean-up within a community, a port of baleo.
The question is, what wording should we have that actually makes grammatical sense here? Investigate DCC provides doesn't make grammatical sense.
Investigate that.
It's providing grants, it's getting a grant application process in place.
Just put the word that in.
Yeah, I can improve the wording.
Investigate that?
Yep.
DCC provides?
Yeah.
So this is additional to the $1,200 that we're already taking out of the Waste Levy Fund for this?
Well, that's...
The $1,200 for composting workshops. A Waste Levy Grant would be a portion of money set aside for community grants that would be assessed on an application-type process. There would be criteria.
So what it's actually saying is that we're going to investigate putting more money into funded facilitation of these composting workshops?
No, we would want these to be not composting workshops. Community clean-up days would want to be community.
I'm talking about 8.1.2.2?
Oh, 2.2.
That starts investigate DCC provides. What should that read?
To be fair, Kate's just alluded to recommendation two, where it talks about making amendments where necessary formatting changes, et cetera. So this is not quite a complete document because it needs perhaps to be slightly wordsmithed to tidy up exactly your point.
I want to know what the intent is. I want to know if the intent is to actually stick with the existing $1,200 Waste Levy Fund? Or whether to investigate providing a lot more support?
Oh, this is looking at investigating subsidies to go alongside the composting workshops that might help people set up their composting systems at home. So it's an extension.
So it's investigating an extension of the Waste Levy $1,200 Fund?
Yeah, for people who...
So how would you like that to read then? Investigate extending DCC provided support?
I... Excuse me. I don't think we're really getting to the detail of the action list because it's...
No, 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 it's a very simple question. The wording doesn't make sense. Councillor Van de Wiss is looking for clarity around what the wording means. So we do need to know what it means. That's a simple thing there. So is it to continue the support and fund facilitation of educational hands-on composting and investigate subsidies for a setup of a home-based composting system?
That's right, yes. So it would be...
So continue the existing programme, investigate subsidies or increase existing programme and investigate subsidies?
Continue with the programme but investigate subsidies to... so that they jointly get them.
So it's really investigate the subsidy for home composting?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Sid.
Mr Chair, my... As a matter of... if you look on 4.4 under the potential action list, the last paragraph, it says that interfering the plan in the context to the methods, policies and objectives to which they relate for the sake of transparency going forward, they are not being publicly consulted on at this point in time. And the issue that I have is that if we have an action plan and a policy that sits alongside a plan, I think that should go out for public consultation. So the public should have the ability to actually raise issues about the action plan and how it's going to be completed. Because a plan on its own without an action plan is really a document that's going to get it dust. And so I think it's a critical part of the document and should go out for consultation.
Well, under recommendation five, it probably just needs to be modified slightly, too, so we get that intent, if that's what the committee would prefer. And I agree that that information should be out there as part of this process. Theresa.
Okay. I'm looking at the big sheet at number eight, which is the education about zero waste. I mean, I think one of the most fundamental things for myself is about waste reduction, you know, using less waste. And I see that there's a plan to use in virus schools and community groups to try and address that. Just the wording of it, the whole waste reduction, use less waste message, I don't know... can you assure me that that will be the objective? Because to me, it's the fundamental core of what we should be doing.
We brought the waste hierarchy right to the fore inside the plan. And that's the reason why. And we talk about... So whenever you're looking... We quite often, people think of us as providing recycling services or waste disposal services, are those the immediate thought? But any services you engage cost money. So wherever we can get out there with education around waste reduction or prevention of waste, that is the most efficient way of reducing waste to landfill. And we'd certainly be having that conversation with our community through our education programmes.
Because to me, that's really important. If anything, would need to be beefed up and more an action plan. Then I referred to page... I've got two more questions, sorry. On page 4.3, it's talking about the stakeholder engagement groups. And there's four focus groups now. I'm not too sure if the four focus groups will be going out for consultation or not.
We've worked with them in bringing the plan about. What I'll be doing is sending them... As soon as we know we're going out for consultation, I'll be sending them a copy of the plan. And we're going to call them back in together.
Okay, then I suppose my question is, is it possible that there could be another focus group? Or more focus groups than just the four? Because I feel like there should be a focus group talking about reduction of waste.
We're going to... Most of consultations targeting communities and we're going into communities to talk to people. So that's really where our attention's going to be. We're going to update these guys, obviously. But we really want to get down on the ground and out meeting to people and talking about where their interest is and how we can sort of engage them. So, yeah, that's really where we're going for the community.
Because I'm not too sure if these focus groups... I mean, for me, I'm just one councillor, that this has come to me as a councillor and this is my opportunity to communicate what I would like. But I think that a reduction group, a waste reduction group would have great impact. Now, my last question, and this is also very... When we first did our waste reduction plan for the city, it was very much about looking at recycling. Recycled products, what we're collecting, glass, plastic, and how that actually is reused. And if that is actually the cost-benefit analysis to see if it is actually worthwhile or we're spending more money trucking glass than we actually are trying to recycle. Now, we're meant to be getting regular reports about that, which I've not experienced as a city councillor, and it's not strong in here. I can see some mention of Wakaweeeti landfill in number 5.1.4.1 as the review of Wakaweeeti's recycled product cost-benefit analysis. But for the whole city, there's not one single mention in this. And I wonder if it's something that could be an editing thing? That could be put in it, a general cost-benefit analysis and a regular update of recycling? And maybe it's here and I've not seen it. But I believe it should be just as strong as 5.1.4.1, but for the whole city, not simply just Wakaweeeti.
So one of the things that we want to do through the plan and through the licensing provisions is getting more information from waste and diverting material providers. So at the moment, we ask for information. We get a certain amount through our contracts. And obviously, we can do much through our contracts. We got the glass separation and we got the glass market was an example of that. With e-waste and other things now, we're certainly falling in line with government legislation. They've got weak guidelines, they're starting to audit recyclers and that sort of thing. So we make sure that we use those recyclers. So as much as possible, we need to get that information through from private operators. And we'll be doing that through licensing.
And maybe through...
Just to say, and through the reporting side of it, we report through the annual plan, Activity Management Plan, annual plan process on a yearly basis. Those numbers come through in the annual report.
Through Mr Avery. I mean, this reporting on how glass, plastic, how it's recycled, and how much the cost and the benefits, that is actually council policy. And it should be in the document. And I just feel like it could be incorporated as an editing matter before it goes out to the public, because it is actually our practice.
Well, you need to... I mean, there's a number of councillors around this table that are involved in the preparation of the document. Rather than me making a comment, it's... You know, the document is... does have some information. I suppose it's up to the councillors whether you want additional information included or not.
Can I just make a comment? That's a fair call, Theresa. And we have talked about having a report back to give the latest information on where the volumes are at, whether it's glass or plastics or whatever. I see this as a high-level document. And I would much rather see more regular reporting through the committee, just where things are at. And I imagine that information from the contractor on weights, that volumes or whatever is relatively easy to get a hold of. But for this document, I don't believe it's the place to have, you know, your volumes. Because they will change. Hopefully, they'll go up.
It wasn't so much the volume. It was seeing if shipping glass to Auckland is actually the most cost-effective way of managing it. And that information being available to councillors and to the public. And I think that that is all plastic. We put our plastic in the recycling bin. It's important for the public to know what the end result of that plastic is.
Yeah, and to a large degree, certainly through council contracts, we can provide that information by asking our contractors. But we can't from private operators, particularly easier, am I right?
No, not from me.
So that's something that we do want to improve. Obviously, we would like to keep the materials as close to home as possible. And we'd like to get the highest quality out of the materials. So these are all things that have been cited in here as areas that we want to address and get better reporting around on a district-wide level, which includes private operators.
And so through you, Mr Chair, I do see in 5.1.4.1 very specific comments about Wakaweeeti landfill and monitoring there, plastics, glass and what happens to it. And I cannot understand why that cannot be also done for general city.
So you're referring to 5.1...
Oh, no, sorry, 5.1.3.1. 5.1.3.1. Invest that cost benefit of all available options for the safe and affordable landfill disposal. And then, sorry, the next one is talking about recyclables. So it's just that information being more generalised.
Well, I think that is... We do collect that information as much as we can, Mr Chair.
And on where that we're doing.
So you're happy that, providing we get more regular reporting back through the committee to cover the issues that you've raised, you're happy with that?
Yep.
And in terms of the... We've really only got control over 50% of the waste stream. Remembering the other 50%, as Cath has said, is controlled by the private sector. But we certainly get info on that 50 that we have got control over.
That can be...
So you're happy with that?
Somehow, I'm happy.
Neil.
Mr Chair, I'm wondering if the staff can enlighten me a little. It's been suggested that recycling may extend out into the retail community or the business community. How wide is your scope? Are you just talking retailers in the town? Or would it extend out to manufacturers and businesses, people like that?
We've been approached by several businesses around the industrial area and retail areas for the service. So we've included that in as an investigation phase to see the viability of it.
It's quite a bit of it out there in those, especially in those areas. With retail, can you enlighten me? What do they do now? What happens to all the cardboard, for instance, and the packaging that goes into, you know, products at shops?
Currently, there's...
They get before they fish it out?
Currently, there's an evening cardboard collection service on a Monday and a Thursday night through town. And what they do with their plastics and other recyclables, we don't offer a service. So whether they have a commercial operator or it just ends up in the rubbish. Several other cities, such as Christchurch and Timaru, they offer their recycling services right through the CBD areas as well. So we thought we'd consider that as well.
Is it a big problem or is it a problem at all in the city?
With more residents living in the city area, those services are being requested now. So we put that in as a to investigate this phase.
And this plans?
Yep.
The scope's wide enough to do all that?
Yes.
Thank you. Lee.
I understand that we're already running things like composting workshops and doing a lot of waste minimisation things. Why... Well, first of all, why was this paper late in its arrival?
I think, to be fair, I covered that off at the front end.
You said it was, I was wondering why.
I guess we put a lot into the research behind it and getting the plan right. So it's a first plan for me. So it's been a learning experience as well.
Okay. It's just that a member of the public has complained they never had a chance to see it. And certainly, we didn't have much time to look at it. Given that it's got seven A3 pages of essentially new actions, and that includes investigating 31 largely new initiatives, what do you think the overall cost would be of actually investigating 31 largely new initiatives as laid out in the plan?
Well, over the life of the plan, which the plan's sort of focusing on a 10-year, 10 to 20-year scheme, which would be reviewed every three or six years, we've currently forecasted that it would be able to be achieved within our current existing budgets.
The question was... The question was how much, and the next question is, these 31 investigations that have got to take place, are they going to happen in the next year, are they going to happen in the next 10 years, or in the next three years?
Can I cut across, my understanding is that that needs to go to the annual plan, and depending on what the council agree to do next annual plan, the new council, they will decide on either how quick or how slow the action plan is implemented. So, the question you're asking staff has a political influence further down the track, and I don't think in fairness to them, they can actually give you an answer, because they don't know, we don't know, and the new council will actually make that call in due course.
She was suggesting that we tick off investigating 31 largely new initiatives when we don't know when they'll be instituted or how much any of this is going to cost.
No, what I'm saying is that this is not the time to tick off the budget for the action plan, that will come at a later date.
Yeah, I'm not interested in ticking off the budget, I'm interested in deciding whether or not I want to vote for this lot, and I can't see how you can do 31 investigations of largely new initiatives out of an existing budget. I'd like to know how much more this is all going to cost, this is seven A3 pages of new initiatives.
Okay, may I be able to help?
Through the chair, a lot of these actions have come out of our existing Resource Recovery Waste Management Plan, so they're not all new initiatives, and so we have...
There are 31 of them that say investigate.
Yep.
And essentially new initiatives, that's the bulk of it.
Yeah, and our previous one had a lot of those in them as well, and we've brought those ones through our assessment of the previous Waste Management Minimisation Plan.
So, are you saying that you are in fact already investigating a lot of these 31 initiatives?
Yep.
Okay, and when it says investigate, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to do it. Where it says develop or evaluate and endorse or support and promote, these actually do mean you are going to do these actions, doesn't it?
They're linked up through the methods here, so where the methods are sitting at a higher level.
Thank you. Richard then, Kate. And then, hopefully someone will move.
The questions being asked by my colleague on the left have got vandalism written all over them.
I'm glad you noticed that someone here is interested in what it costs.
But is it not correct that we're being asked to vote on whether or not this goes out for public consultation, and in the normal course of events, we would expect that the public would be asked to comment on these things, and then decisions might be made subsequently around following that feedback, exactly how far we take which particular part, would that not be the normal thing we would expect?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
And taking that issue slightly further, which was, isn't it correct that a lot of this would actually be funded out of the fees, the internal, I can't remember, it was waste minimisation, the levy?
Waste levy.
So, it's not necessarily a new budget item, and it'll be internally generated by the amount of rubbish that's self perpetuating in that respect?
Yes.
And that budget is very limited as to what you put the money to, and it has to be ticked off under the minimisation plan, so that process has to be a very clear and transparent one.
And it's audited by the Ministry for Environment, we've just been audited.
And taking that issue slightly further, there may be, while we know extra cost to the community through rates, funding for some of these projects, it will be, the more they use the tips and the rubbish bags will generate that income.
Yeah, and products stewardship initiatives, and think outside of council, we're encouraging those as well, so getting businesses involved and making it more accessible and affordable to people.
Thank you, I'm happy to second because I get the issue that I've got resolved.
I think, so, are you happy to move?
Yeah, I'm happy to move with a change on the order paper in recommendation one, after the word minimisation plan, insert along with the potential action list, and the other changes in number five, after the word da, that the funding of the potential action list for the future plans, considerations starting in 214, 215.
Very good. Before I go to a second, councillor, or Kate mentioned about under three, actually appointing the panel, who the panel is, maybe give that some thought, and under, I just wondered whether we could tidy up councillor Stevenson's concern with a number six that we ask staff to report back on the current volumes being diverted with the current system, to tidy that up?
Rather than resolution, we just take it as a, we'll do that.
And sorry, it wasn't the quantity, it was cost benefit.
Cost benefit and whether it's being shipped to wherever, Auckland, China, wherever, okay. So, that'll be done regardless, so we don't need it as a...
You could list it as an item of consideration.
Okay, that's cool.
Do you want to leave that?
I think alter three to include as stipulated on four point five.
Can you name them? It's just the hearings panel B, councillors McTavish, Noon, Butcher, and the mayor, and the event, within, the word in the motion at plan E is, it'll turn it, councillor Vandis.
Yeah, you were intent, I understand, and the wording, Pam will pick up the correct wording, and you're happy to second those?
Yes. One extra line, and I think this goes beyond, and I'd like to also put a vote of thanks to the staff and the steering group for their work on this, I think it's not an easy subject to deal with, it's been a huge amount of work, and I think it deserves its separate own line in there. If that's all right with us.
Thank you, Kate. You're happy with that, Sid?
Yes.
And Kate, it's just a little to the effect that we just noted that under those motions, that it's been a huge task for... Okay, discussion. The mover is Sid, you're okay? Right, Lee.
I'm very happy with councillor Brown's change to the wording in recommendation one, in making it the potential action list, because as it read, the way I understood it, we were obliged to do all of those things on all seven A3 pages, and quite frankly, I don't think even the 700 staff that we've got could get around the whole lot, certainly not in the next year. But given that it is a potential action list...
Point of order, Mr Chairman. Is she point of order, Sid?
Yeah, I would like to correct, I don't think the council employs 700 staff at this stage, so I think that's an exaggeration.
Factually incorrect, I'll rule on that. Do you want to have another stab at it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll say 670 FTEs, plus all the part timers, plus all the indirectly employed, plus the consultants, I'd say 700 was actually really quite shy of the mark, it's probably more like a thousand. But anyway, I'm quite happy to be corrected on the exactitude of the number, it is 700, 670, I believe, at the last count, but 700 was simply a rounding, I apologise for the inaccuracy.
Okay, you've had your spiel, and let's focus on what's on the table.
Yes, recommendation one, as long as it's a potential action list, I'm happy to vote for it. I believe that there's a lot of good stuff in here, but I believe that trying to do all of it would be, quite frankly, not practical, and it reminds me very much actually of the last time I was on council in 2006, I think, when we voted for a waste minimisation plan, which actually stated that there would be zero waste by, I think it was 2010.
Fifteen.
Quite possibly, but that aside the point, it may have been why I wasn't elected, councillor Thompson, but the fact is I was right, there was no chance of that ever happening, it was pie in the sky, and it's all very well to have high aims, and I think we should have them, and I think a lot of good stuff in this plan is to be highly commended, but I'd be very afraid if we were going to actually be obliged to do everything that's in here. I think councillor Brown's suggestion of having the actions as a potential action list is ideal, and happy to vote for it on that basis.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Theresa.
Good luck doing all this. I'm particularly excited and been able to do something about reducing the amount of waste that people use, and I'm hoping that, you know, the staff and the community can look at innovative ways to try and encourage people to not go to the supermarket and buy everything, truckloads of packaging.
That's definitely where the level of thinking is at.
Yep, and the other thing is, I'd like to think that out of this, that we are going to be very proactive about looking about how we use what we recycle, and sometimes I wonder if it's the wisest thing in the world to ship glass so far away.
Glass is actually a really good story, so I will put something together for you.
Thank you. Okay, so like, and yeah, so good luck, and yeah, and I don't know, I, whether it's good, I'm just sure that there's more innovative ways that we can recycle or reuse than I not thought to us.
So am I.
Community thinking in that way.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Colin.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, paragraph through section three, I suggest we remove, I'm not quite sure if councillor Vandis was rambling where the waste recycling was, but I would take out the words as alternative, because it doesn't really say who won't be there and who may be there and why does he get there, he either should be in the panel or not, so I'd suggest that he be added to the panel.
In the recommendation, the paper said of Mayor Col...
Yeah, well, it doesn't say it here, though, so from a resolution point of view, it's not clear, and the question I tend to have is, if the mayor's not available on day three of us, or the hearing day, fine, but what happens if the group have to work at other times? I'm not criticising the mayor, I think he should be, the mayor should be there if he can be, but I think for clarity, it'd be easier to take out the alternative and just add councillor Vandis to the hearings panel.
The new quorum's still quite large.
Oh, really?
Councillor Vandis, or Lee, have you got any concerns, a few?
None.
Okay. Committee, the committee happy with that? General agreement?
No, put a minute, did we count?
Yes?
Colin, that's right.
Okay, so, three will be amended?
Yeah, but it's going to stand up to him.
And we can take these separately if people want to voice a different opinion?
What names?
Andrew.
Theresa.
I've already spoken once, but if you would indulge me to add something extra?
Only if you're going to speak to three. Okay, sorry.
Oh.
Are there any further speakers? If not, can I just once again acknowledge Cath for the work you've done, this process would normally involve an external consultant, I know John Cox was involved on a very minor scale, and it's been great that this has been able to be achieved, this documentation in-house. And I think also for this particular issue, we're dealing with waste management and waste minimisation, it crosses, I think, everybody's path on a daily basis, having to deal with your waste, and this day and age, people think of it, or most people think of it a lot differently, they're all trying to do, or most people are trying to do their bit for the environment, and with some of the overall objectives of this plan, it does certainly show that we're certainly taking a responsibility and willing to walk the talk and also achieve the outcomes in the plan collectively with the wider community. So, look forward to the consultation, and no doubt there will be some innovative ideas that will come back and suggest that we need to make some changes, and the hearings panel will obviously have an open mind and consider those and report back eventually to council. Are there any further speakers? If not, we'll put these one at a time, sorry, Theresa, one at a time. So, recommendation one, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, recommendation two, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, recommendation three, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, recommendation four, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, recommendation five, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, and six, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried. Very good, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Well done. Now, that's, you've got to, apparently I hear that you are shouting, Cath?
I thought it was sharing...
A large copy, I heard.
Had a coffee. I was sorry, Andrew, are you going to do items for consideration? It's not the end of the meeting.
We're not quite there yet. Okay, moving on to item fee, we've got item five, so we've got Bruce. Welcome, Bruce. Naming of new private waste alley Moskew, this has been to the Moskew Tari community board who have supported the suggestion name, the suggestion name. Bruce, is there any comments you wanted to make?
This is nice and straightforward.
I'll move, sir.
Fits under the criteria, moved by Colin, seconded by Bill, any discussion? Anyone want to talk about that great win Baghdad notes? No, okay, no, perhaps not. Okay, I put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six, Ian, perhaps Ian, is he dealing with item six or not? Perhaps the GM is dealing with item six.
I'll move.
North Tari residential curbside recycling, once again, been to the community board, moved by councillor Lawson, seconded by councillor Brown. Any queries, questions, discussion? Lee.
I was just wondering if on recommendation two, the curbside recycling rate of $64 including GST, does that actually, is that going to be able to cover the actual cost, given that there are much greater distances and spaces between in this case?
My understanding is that it travels through that area anyway, so it's not adding to the route, and so the $64 is the average cost across the entire residential area for the full cost of the service.
So, there's actually going to be no impact on the cost of that even service?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you. And just to confirm that, that is the figure we have in the draft annual plan for 13, 14, and not the current 12, 13 targeted rate?
Hasn't changed.
Okay.
As far as I can recall.
It was 63 originally, I think. Yep.
Cool. Happy to move both?
Happy to move. Moved by Lee, seconded by...
No, we've done that already.
Oh, sorry, sorry, we moved, sorry, speaking, any other further speakers, sorry? If not, I'll put those two recommendations, that's one and two, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, the Wicklow Street Walk cycle connection, the missing link, just to report, welcome, Michael, just to report that, as in the report, talks about Lee and myself, Michael, Tony, Graham, Ian McCabe from NZTA, went and sight visited as per the recommendation from the council meeting some time ago, and had a look for ourselves. It was really useful to familiarise ourselves with the site and understand the sort of physical challenges that exist, and I suppose for noting, and I think Pam will put up a aerial photograph up on the screen, but clearly, the majority of the connection through the Leith Street, well, not through, but under the Leith Street Bridge and over the Leith Street Bridge is obviously existing, and it's really only that relatively short connection that needs to be added. I was just talking about, so we started...
There's some people looking at that.
Okay, probably paid a look at the board towards the octagon. Okay, so we started at this park, in the car park, and started at this point, and essentially walked, where'd we go? We walked down, well, okay, we start at this point here, this is from Ravensbourne, we just come under the bridge, turn a right, come along, and then we'd start, we'd turn, we'd do 180 degrees, and then we'd walk along a ramp, which I think has got to be at a, is it a 12 degrees?
One and 12.
One and 12. So, we walked along this ramp here, and then crossed the Leith, and then did another 180, and then went underneath the bridge.
Like, did 90 and then another 180?
We did 180 at the top, and then we did a 90 there, yeah, true, yep.
Has this fork have been drinking?
Yeah.
I can't hold it, sorry. Underneath both bridges.
I've got another.
And then we did probably 180 here, and we stopped about that point. Now, the idea is to continue along until the Enviro Waste, into the Enviro Waste Site, the city side Enviro Waste, and come through here, and then down here onto...
We just come on to Frye's Street.
Frye's Street, somewhere here.
District comes out there.
Yep. The issue has been raised, well, there was other questions raised about the possibility of having a clip-on on the Leith. of having a clip-on on the, the Leith Bridge, whether that's on the railway?
It'd be on the railway.
Railway. On the railway bridge, now in the report, it just talks about the cost of that, I mean, Michael may want to make, make some comment on that and the, the airspace across that bridge with the, the shell pipes which are existing and whether it's problematic whether, whether the city could actually secure a pedestrian bridge there anyway, question mark, and also there was, since that meeting, there was also the issue raised, and I think Axel raised it, by going straight down and continuing down to the Ward Street over bridge and then connecting into Wickliffe and then back down, down here as another option, but I understand that there was some dialogue with Kiwi Rail, and I'm not sure whether it's Michael or Tony is able to shed any light on that possibility.
The question being raised about carrying along the railway line, going under the Ward Street Bridge and then running along to the?
Point.
Yeah, crossing point by the railway station.
St Andrews Street.
St Andrews Street, thank you. Indications are that Kiwi Rail would not be amenable to that, as I understand it from my conversation with Mike, because of their needs, there's a siding there and other things, so that would rule that out. The other options are along the railway line to the Ward Street Bridge and then turning left on to Fryett Street, Wickliffe Street, whichever one it is, but, which is the point?
Yeah, orange.
Can you move that picture over slightly on, if you ask Pam, she can move it slightly to the north, south me, other way, other way, other way.
Yep, so the options are, what we're currently proposing is you come along here, through here, which then opens up this road and this road and this one to parking for the stadium, there's also an existing cycleway that comes along here, there are now some questions around whether that's the best place for the cycleway down there, the other option is to carry on along here, you have to come around this corner, back round the, the end of the bridge there and then pop out there, which would probably be less optimal from a variety of purposes, but many people see that as being okay, the cost of putting it out there and the cost of bringing it through there, as I understand, based on Michael's numbers are about the same. The issue down here, the reason we pursued this one was because it provided a more direct link into this sort of area down here for parking, for stadium events, a direct link through here, a lot of people, if you've been here, know what they park in this area through here, they tend to go over the bridge, Ward Street and then around and through, down this route to the stadium and back, this would provide another alternative in the back door effectively of the stadium, so.
Michael, was there anything else you would like to add?
Uh, yes, if I may, through the chair, one of the further issues with extending, we, we have a lease arrangement with Kiwi Rail along the railway corridor to, through the entrance to the Shell site currently, progressing beyond there, coming up past that land, also already has a deed of lease between the fuel company and Kiwi Rail, and while that doesn't preclude us doing it, there would be a number of negotiations we'd have to negotiate, not only with Kiwi Rail but with the other leaseholder along there about criteria, so it's not quite as straightforward as just leaping into it.
So they've got a pipeline that runs the full length of that section, that Shell have a pipeline through on the railway reserve?
If you just turn around, Mike, so you're talking about, so we've got, we've got an arrangement for this bit here?
That's correct.
Through there, but if we came for this bit here, it's not certain we're going to get it, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, questions, Lee?
Um, I understand we're not able to buy the strip of Kiwi Rail land that we need, would we be paying a lease on it, and if so, how much?
We are paying a lease there, I believe, of seven hundred dollars a year.
And there is no way of reducing the cost of some two hundred thousand dollars for the land through the Shell site from the ORC? I mean, have, are we in a position where we simply have to take the price asked, or could we still negotiate on that?
We've left the property negotiations through the property department, who have had those discussions with Z Energy, who have a leasehold interest, as I understand it, over that bit, as well as Chalmers Property, who own the underlying land, the advice I've received from Robert Clark, as he's, he's done us the best deal he can, we haven't gone, tried to go back to the, at Targa Regional Council, for example, around the land, the Port of Targa stance is that this would need to be paid at full commercial rates for that strip through there.
Right, so is, is there no point in even going back to them, asking them for a more reasonable price?
Um, well, we could certainly try, there's no, but they have, their view as far as I, at the moment has been, well, this is a, a commercial deal proposition for them, so they're charging, you know, commercial rates, or commercial value.
I'll just echo that frustration, I think that this is about, I mean, the ORC at one superior during the millennium was very good about providing walkways and everything else, and this is about a Targa Regional Council rate payers in Dunedin getting better access to the harbour, and I think it's really sad if it was seen as a commercial deal, and I think there's, it would be, I mean, considering the wins that the port and, I have to say that the road maintenance costs further down that site may cost the city, having been out there and seen the mud all over the road recently, I think there's a good, good argument that this is a joint project for both the ORC and DCC that's a win-win for the rate payers rather than being seen as a commercial cost to some rate payers, it'd be very sad if it wasn't seen as the stadium they've put money into and this is part of them finishing that project off perhaps, I really endorse that approach to be taken with the ORC.
I'm not sure how successful we will be, they certainly contributed to the first stage of the cycleway.
I have great faith in the staff here being able to talk very well to the staff at the ORC, and I have great faith in the ORC council doing, doing what is best.
Thank you, any further questions, concerns, we might turn the lights back on. So the recommendations, or the recommendation essentially just confirms the route that we've discussed, I'm happy to move that that's, that's the committee's position, so I'll move that way over, seconded, seconded by Richard, any discussion? No, all I really need to say that this is, at the moment, a, a missing, missing link for the cycleway neckway, the cycleway walkway to St Leonard's at the moment, and it's clearly the city's number one priority in terms of cycleway pedestrian facilities, and I'm sure the users of the current cycleway walkway will welcome this with pleasure, having this connection, and obviously there are other benefits, as Tony's alluded to, in terms of people parking in and around that, that walk area and connecting to the stadium rather than having going up, going up to the Ward Street, and it does give a much more direct link to the, the harbour connection towards Portsmouth Drive, so I think that, that's also a benefit as well. Are there any other speakers? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against carried, thank you, moving on to the last item, notification of agenda item consideration by the chair, so we'll pick up on the Theresa one with regards to the, the report.
Yeah, it was just simply reporting on the financial and environmental cost benefits of the various recycling methods.
Point of order, Mr Chairman, I raised that in matters of consideration by the chair last month.
You did.
And still haven't had a comment back from anybody.
To be grateful.
Already been raised.
If I remember correctly, I think, uh, Lee was the chair, I'm not, no.
He was.
Hey, sorry, I, I didn't spot that in the, in the minute, so my apologies, I'll certainly follow it up, and no doubt Lee will remind me, thank you for that, Paul, Colin.
Chairman, I'm not sure if this is the right committee, but I presume it is. I would think it's probably close to time for our senior staff to arrange a report on the seawall issues at Sinclair, it would be fair to say at the moment we're getting pretty good information, I suspect, but it's in the early t, I think there is some implications for the council, and as appropriate, I'd ask that they report in the first instance, whatever committee that or council that may be, not a criticism, just asking, we're getting a lot of questions as councillors, and there's a lot of questions we can't answer, and I realised today with Mr Hamilton's comments, and I congratulate him on that, for reinforcing there's potential of some liability risk falling somewhere else, I wouldn't want to put my foot anywhere near that discussion, I welcome, encourage him to continue that, but I think there will be an opportunity for council to brief shortly.
Thank you. Tony, do you want to respond in terms of the timing of that?
Um, no, I mean, the, the works I'm going in terms of the temporary arrangements, we're out into the market now, I think Graham mentioned in the paper this morning, looking for international consultants that can advise on the wall itself in terms of the integrity and stuff, that's the current status of it, but there's no problem with reporting back when we have something.
Okay, Paul.
We've had a lot of very productive discussions over the last week or two about cycleways in Dunedin, and I note in Steve Walker's letter to the editor this week, he's asking questions about the Port Chalmers cycleway completion, I did ask some time ago for a copy of the route map to show where the cycleway will go from St Leonard's to take us through to Port Chalmers, and I'd ask that be circulated to councillors so that we do have an understanding and can ask, answer the questions we're being asked about the specific route.
Thanks for that, Paul, when we discussed it at the community board meeting last week, as you say, it was agreed to ask probably Bruce Richards to come along and, and give us an update and cover the topic that you've just raised, and in talking to Bruce in the last week or so, they've certainly settled on a, on a route, so that information is available, so we'll ensure that, that, that does happen.
Thank you.
Are there any other items? No? Tony, did you want to just comment on the, the opening at Tuhuna date, I think it's the twenty sixth of, this is the secondary treatment plant at Tuhuna?
Thanks, gee, um, you should have all received an invitation to the grand opening of the Grand Plant, you haven't, should have, so there's an odd there, there's an E that's coming out, I think, and there's a hard copy that I saw being distributed, check the councillor boxers, it's an afternoon affair, obviously the secondary treatment plant at Tuhuna is complete, with the long outfall and the secondary treatment, it's around about a hundred and ten, I think it's about a hundred and ten million dollars worth of expenditure, so looking to open it, so it'll be, for those that have been to Tuhuna, you've been in the big waste hall with the large swimming pool type thing, we're looking at little tables on the side, canapes, alcohol.
And volcanoes.
And volcanoes, and we're looking for big, big numbers, seriously, we won't be doing that, but we will, we will have an official opening, so.
And snorkeling gear?
And snorkeling gear, there will be guided tours.
Well, look, look.
So, but we did want to mark the opening of Tuhuna, given the significant expenditure and the fact that Tuhuna, the, the secondary treatment represents the end of a, a sort of a waste upgrade process that the council agreed on in the early nineties, so it's, the council stuck to its guns the entire way, so it's about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety million dollars in total, I think, with all the other bits, so it's, we thought it was necessary to mark that with an appropriate occasion.
Are you not going?
I will be there.
You've got CDC chairs at that time.
Right, we'll need to, I'll need to discuss with the CDC.
All about prioritising, Bill.
Chair.
That concludes the meeting, thank you very much for your contribution, and P and E will start in five minutes' time, thank you.